Well, not very respective to the get off the property, it's personal property. It's a vacant lot, I mean, it's a vacant property. And they see that as a place to go. We have contacted them, I'm sure a lot of times that you're not aware of, because if they can find something out there in another one of my respective senses jumping over chickens and press up in front of your face. Now, the sign is well at this research with the city attorney, that's a big knowledge department in code and we have to have a care. We can't really, I'm like, we'll never be able to come over, come over for a habit. We run them off, uh, we shut down the road for an hour ago, but it was a rotation.
Is that one an empty building, but child protective services and domino pizza? They're all skating that parking lot too. By domino pizza and family protective services, child protective services, they are not empty buildings and they do that on.
Yeah, I wasn't worried to have a problem.
Yeah, I think, I think we went to, I talked to John, he sent you email about the state of Texas, the concern about that. There people work with the four seven. Another thing, by old Sonic, chicken express and new Sonic, we have drainage problems. It's flooding when it rains.
Yeah, great.
You aware of that?
Well, I mean, I'm just generally aware of drainage issue we have out here in this town. We'll see, we'll have to see what they look at there. Are you aware of drainage issue here specifically?
Well, Wesley, okay, Wesley is under Texas jurisdiction, the state of Texas, and basically was built long time ago, and because of development over the years, doesn't have enough underground drainage apparatus to take care of it, and that's the problem. And we worked with Texas, we're close to coming up with a solution, but I can get again the text out and, and see if any option.
Yeah, that's what drainage is about, it gathers, you know, the whole way it's been watered out.
Do you have any pictures at all, have you taken any pictures?
I can send, I will, I'll take a picture and send those to you.
Yeah, I would have a problem with text out already.
On both of us. Yeah, I have a property and I had ten houses on that property. And all the branches are coming to my building, behind American National Bank.
Okay.
And if there's any way we can do anything about that.
Uh, branches from trees of all and other properties coming onto your property?
Yeah, number one, and number two, some, some, one property, all the branches coming to the east lane, on the corner of Stonewall and East Lane. You can just walk on the sidewalk.
Okay. You got that, don't worry. Did you hear that, Reggie? Let's see, we can handle it for you.
All right. My property, uh, or my problem is, as I think you well know, alley-oop and everything. And what I'm asking the city to do, uh, King Street is very narrow, and with the recent, uh, property, I mean, construction being done, the traffic has increased tremendously.
Because of apartment complex, is that?
Yes. And I would like to see King Street from at least Mitchell to Carroll Road widened. Uh, that was talked about one time a good while ago. And I think we definitely need it. I know it's, I had to hold my breath one time to help UPS, truck and school bus pass each other.
Straighter.
Opposite ways, but they may not have that much. And it's really wide, really narrow for too large for people. And now, uh, I need to need to put some slow zones or something up because some of them are, they're there, uh, as I say, ninety miles an hour, they're not really going that fast, it sure doesn't seem like it.
So, do you have, do you have, they don't have a placemat at all on that street, King Street at all, or they all live that fast?
No, it's not, I'm trying to be light.
Well, I understand your concern, uh, it doesn't look like we have anything, at least in our plans to widen the street, but we'll look at the speed of the traffic over there. Keep that in mind.
Is there any chance of widening on the street?
I'm not saying there's no chance of widening the street, I, I'll tell you that there's no chance in the immediate future.
Yeah.
Just simply because resources and, uh, it makes it very difficult, uh, to widen streets. Uh, we, right now, we're having a hard enough time getting story seal. You saw on our, maybe saw on our agenda for more than that, we do have about three hundred thousand, better than eight thousand dollars going towards street maintenance for story seal. In one asphalt overlay project to continue that work that Texas had done on Wesley, on down Lee Street, and it's just, it's just really tough to fit in a street reconstruction project that would widen. I think you have openage, uh, culverts on either side of that road, um, I would, I would, yeah, she has to go underground storm service system, um, which would be a problem.
Now, they're fixing, they're preparing to, uh, put, uh, grain ditch on the south of my privacy fence. They've already, they already did it, marked off and everything to do that, and that, that will help as far as.
The drainage issue.
Drainage, uh-huh.
Yeah.
Uh, that's not gonna help the, uh, cars going by and it's, uh...
Well, we'll see what we can do about the speeding. Uh, I know that's not a permanent solution to your problem, but...
Pretty more concerned about it being widened. At one time, we were told that if they did, they would widen it on the opposite side of the street.
That vacant lane?
Uh-huh.
Like I said, we'll see what we can do about the speeding, it's hardly immediate future of concern, we don't have them, our best to widen the street.
Yes, they, uh, police are controlling the area, really good.
Oh, good. Let us know if that drainage issue that look out too, I know we've worked on that question then.
Well, it's gonna be much better.
Good.
I'm Becky Crabtree, I live on Park Street, and I just have a comment. I'm a regular caller into code enforcement office, and, uh, the...
Thank you.
And I walk, uh, the dog from Park Street through O'Neil, through Jones, down to the cemetery every morning. I have seen a vast improvement in the lots and the homes have been painted. Uh, it is just, uh, the difference from this last year, this time last year, and now is just, uh, tremendous.
Good.
And I just want to express my appreciation for that.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
My name is Paul Martin, I'm in, I'm in, in number X A P.
Barbara, how are you?
Uh, I have a statement, I'm pretty personal. Okay, let's say it then, Mr. Pan, this is basically two hundred and forty, number four. The chance to do the law enforcement.
Okay.
And I do believe that some of these things tend to be accomplished, but before they are accomplished, I think some other things needs to be addressed. And, uh, these are the things that I found in talking with all the people in the community, especially in other things.
Okay.
And some experiences I've had personally. So, I first of all, like to tell you that, that in the Greenville Police Department, you do have some corrupt people there. They manufacture cases, they do racial profiling, they will not protect taxpaying citizens if they don't fight you. They retaliate hate against families, and I've been one of them, and I just think it should stop. I have talked with the State International and double X A P, I have talked with CNN, I have talked with the Attorney General and the Justice Department. And I've also relocated some of my veterans because of these things. So, right now, I just pray that someone will come in and start at the top and change some of these corrupt things that are going on.
Thank you. Barbara, I would like, Barbara, I would like to sit down and talk to you about some of those issues that you're referring to. I, I've been here, uh, going on, on two years in just a few weeks, and granted, my experiences will be different, you know, than some, than others, since I'm city manager. Uh, but my experiences so far have shown that we have a, have a great police force that are very focused on improving public safety within our community. They respond very quickly when we have issues that come up with neighborhoods, uh, that are brought to our attention. And so, it concerns me greatly that, that you have brought up some issues regarding, regarding corruption within our apartment. I would love to sit down, please, you and I, visit with you in more depth about that and what that might include and some more details on that.
Would you make one example?
If you want to discuss that.
Uh, Bill Glenn, the late Bill Glenn, is my husband, and, uh, he's with the double X A P, and he passed last year. And since that time, my family has had quite a few problems with the police department. One example is last year, in two thousand and eight, the Landfall to Bethany. Uh, my grandson and I, and he's sixteen, we were traveling in a vehicle, it was about eleven thirty at night. We had came from Walmart, and we came down Wesley, headed north. We got two of the stop signs, about the loop, we stopped, and there was a car behind us. We crossed over, the car crossed over, thinking nothing, but the car was so close to me till I changed, took my blinker and I changed the lights. And once I changed the light, the car changed the light. So, I'm thinking, is this car following me? I don't know who it is. My grandson, he don't know who it is. We proceeded to go on down Wesley, I get in on mine, they get on mine. So, when I got there into O'Neil, I made a turn on O'Neil, they made a turn on O'Neil. I made a quick turn and went back toward Wesley, and they did the same thing. So, then I knew they were following us, and for a reason I don't know. We proceeded down Wesley, I called the police department, and I told them what had happened and what was going on at the time. I was not gonna go to my home with this car following me like this. So, I went into the police department, drive, right there on Lee Street. The officer is still on the phone. I told him, the car is still following me. He says, I can see you, pull up and stop. I said, but the car's right behind me. He knew I was, because I told him who I was. I said, the car is still behind me, and I don't know what they're gonna do, because they pulled at the police station, followed me there. So, I backed up and pulled out of the police station, and came down the one way, and pulled back into the police station. I did that four times, and each time, that car followed me. And finally, on that fourth time, the officer says, I see you, if you go out that one way one more time, you're gonna get in trouble. I said, I wanna get in trouble. I wanna take it, someone needs to get out there. And at that particular time, I parked again, and the police officer pulls up. The car pulls out and drops a light. Nothing was ever done. Man, they had my license tags, and they saw my car, they saw that car that was following me, they did not do.
What, you said it was a year ago?
It was about a year, about last year.
About last year. So, oh, last fall. Okay. All right, we'll look into that, at least that one incident. I'd like to, I'd still like to sit down and talk about the other one you're referring to. Yeah, I would like to, definitely would. I, I, because my experiences have been very positive with our police department, and most of the citizens that I've spoken with and received feedback from, the feedback has been positive. And so, like I said, it does concern me that, that you brought up some of these issues, I would like to visit more. Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm, uh, Jim Narromore. Uh, my wife Carla and I have been residents of Greenville our entire lives, reporting race in Greenville. We currently live, uh, on the south, uh, the south part of Old Mill Road, uh, and I'd like to speak concerning, I believe, in falling under cold floor, pursue greater public safety. And the, uh, the issue we have is, is ongoing for at least the last, uh, ten years that we're aware of, that we've lived at our current location, uh, that is, uh, speeding on Old Mill Road. And, uh, I want to preface this by saying that we, we and our neighbors frequently call about the extremely excessive occurrence of, uh, in excess of seventy or eighty miles an hour on Old Mill Road on a daily basis, a whole variety of vehicles going both directions. Uh, the police department, every time we call, has been very responsive, in my opinion, uh, especially given the, uh, the workload they have in other parts of the city, and, and we are aware that this should be probably to most people, a minor, uh, thing to look after, but for people who live in that area, it's a very major concern. Uh, it's not unusual to, to speed living on Old Mill at twenty-five miles an hour, it's well posted. Uh, so, we've got, we've got vehicles that are going three, uh, two and three times the speed limit. Uh, I understand that it's hard to catch somebody unless you're there doing it, and we don't have the manpower to do it, but I would like to propose that the city look into, uh, at, at, at the intersection of Old Mill Road and Edgewood, there is an always stop sign, uh, stop signs, all directions.
Great.
I, I would like to propose that always stop signs be put on Tanglewood, Westminster, and Bethel in an effort to cut down the, uh, the speeding. Uh, at the very least, if they speed through those stop signs, presumably if they are caught and cited, it'd be a much bigger violation. But, uh, again, uh, I want to stress that the, that the police department has been very cooperative, in my opinion, every time either I, my wife, or our neighbors have called, that we understand they're, that they're short-handed, and, uh, and we appreciate anything that the city can do to, to, to do to help remedy the situation. We have had, I believe, in the last four years, we've had two deaths on Old Mill Road, one right outside the city limit, one within the city limit. We've had, uh, we've had numerous near misses that, uh, Old Mill Road is used, uh, it's a city street, I mean, it's going right down towards the C Street, it's got barges on both sides of it with non- OSHA, with non- OSHA, uh, culverts. So, one of those culverts, you get killed, there's no issue. Uh, we have people that are bicycling and jogging and doing things we could be able to, what we'd expect to be able to do on any of our city streets. So, anything that the city could do going forward, uh, to help alleviate this problem, I know the people that, that live in that area, they would certainly appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. Sue, can you look at the rest of this?
What about speed bumps?
Oh, several years ago, I spoke before the city council, and, and the, the prospect of speed bumps were brought, uh, I think that would be an excellent solution, however, if I remember correctly, the city had a problem with that because there was a concern that it would, uh, that, in the, in the, if we had, uh, emergency vehicles, it might hinder the emergency vehicles. Stop signs might hinder emergency vehicles. I don't, I don't know, but, uh, I'm glad you, I'm glad you brought that up.
For, for, I've heard that suggestion a lot over the years, and for a long as time, and it's always been told by engineer, traffic engineers, and people in that business, that it's just not approved traffic, uh, control device, and I'll let Sue, if you would, just a moment, let me see.
I mentioned, I mentioned before, whether the always stop on, on Edgewood and, and Old Mill. I, I feel certain that if the traffic pattern, uh, for that intersection justifies an always stop, the traffic patterns on the other three intersections I mentioned would definitely justify that, uh, an always stop, and, uh, anyway.
Thank you. Sue, do you want to address the speed bump question? I know that kind of a big one, but I'll make it clear.
Yes, uh, you are correct, and the city council decided ten, fifteen years ago, uh, to see me why that the speed bump is not gonna be a policy for this city. But, but again, it is a matter of policy, it's borne the council to make that decision, and if they knew that, uh, then we can implement it, but this issue being, uh, again, the speed bump issue's been, uh, long for a long time, as long as I think here. As far as the, uh, speeding on Old Mill, I'm aware of that, and if you recall, that was one of the reasons about fifteen years ago, uh, we did get a petition from the neighborhood, and we lowered the speed limit to twenty-five. Actually, our recommendation, the stamp recommendation was to lower it to twenty, but there was some opposition from the neighborhood not to do that, so there was a consensus to have it to, uh, to just twenty-five. But I do understand, and I know firsthand that there's an issue, especially for people that use that road to the county, not, uh, not, uh, just, just the city, but, but again, we can look into the recommendation that you just mentioned.
Uh, Dr. Janet Harrison, about April or May, you know, there was a fire in one of the hotels, and fortunately, no one was hurt, uh, but it was shut down because there was only nine working smoke alarms. Is the city responsible or taking to make sure on businesses like that, that the smoke alarms work?
Yeah, yes, as a matter of fact, Chief Case, if I can get you to talk a little more on that.
Since John's not gonna handle that permit question, I will.
No, no, one more.
Do you like that, uh, yes. Do you, when something like that happens, uh, you know, you hate to say it's a good deal or bad, but it gives us the opportunity to, back when that place was built, it may not meet the codes that it does, you know, that are required today. And when something like that happens, they get permitted, now they'll have to meet the codes that are required today. Yes, it will. That's part of, my understanding, part of the delay, why this has taken so long, is because we're requiring a lot more codes that they need to meet.
So, do the same, do the code enforcement, like the one thing, do the same, do the code enforcement for the fire department, or you have a better all?
No, it's the code enforcement for the, for fire codes is handled by the fire department. You know, field head codes, uh, high grass codes and all that is handled by community development.
If, if our marshal determines or our, our process determines are not meeting code, what, what do you do?
Uh, basically, in that situation, when somebody gets a permit and they're trying to open a business, the fire marshal won't sign the, the CO, uh, to open up that business until they meet code. There's, uh, been two or three different places in town, that the construction process, we've been, uh, you know, people trying to update it, do whatever, if it's really drawn out because they haven't met code, and we don't sign off on anything like that until they do. It's part of, really, overall city plan, uh, really thought I might build some code and fire, state fire code questions here today, because we have been going to businesses, and, and that's been a whole different deal, there's, we don't have any new codes, but we are enforcing the fire codes a lot more, even in the business community, not only the business community, but the city of Greenville, and my fire administration office and, and fire stations are being brought up the code.
I have one more question, especially like on the hotels and hotels in the area, how often are they looked at for code enforcement, or what's not?
All, all businesses in the city of Greenville are inspected at minimum at least once a year. And we went to that twice a year, I'm not sure manpower's gonna allow us to sustain, uh, you know, sustain that. But all, all business offices in Greenville will be inspected at least once a year.
I have one more question.
Sure.
And I've got the, uh, the volunteers, is that something volunteers can do for the fire department then?
Uh, no, not really, they have to be, uh, certified inspector, fire inspector, it's a state certification we, we carry, our certified, uh, fire marshal is pretty much the only one in, in, in the county, actually, right now. There's been talk of, of maybe, uh, Skidney County and charging a fee to do the inspections out in the county of people that need those, they can't wait for the state fire marshal's office, but there's certification, they have to be a certified inspector.
Yes, sir.
I was smart, I don't have bathroom, I don't have life, working my pay, two hundred dollars a month, you should be there for last one year. I tried to afford, C U S and city, no one listen to me, that's it because last year of real year, that place was occupied, and I should pay eighty percent of what they have to be to obtain. I don't have tape, I don't have bathroom, I don't have sewer, nothing. I might be in a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars a month.
Okay. So, I don't understand, you, you say you don't have?
The empty spot.
Oh, this was the?
Built, yeah, built, empty spot, empty spot for rent, and there no one there, no one got who bought, and I'm paying two, a hundred and fifty, two hundred dollars a month.
Let me get with you, uh, do wood, if, uh, tell me, if you can, Lori, Bill, yeah, Lori used to, uh, she used to have a dolly collection of footers fire a little bit, but if you could be with her at the meeting, maybe come up with an answer here.
Okay, I'll listen.
Yes, sir.
I'm Tracy Willoughby, not part of the Cure.
Yeah.
For the Cure.
Absolutely.
But I do have a question for the fire chief. I didn't, but I do now. Brandon, I just got inspected, and the fire department said he cannot use search protectors. And he owns an antique store, and antique store running on search protectors. Ever.
I'll have to, I'll check to get with me after, uh, 'cause it, there's, can be so much more that goes into that, it's, it's the year of the building, what wiring it has, what was it done before code, how many lines are, are going into it, you know, it kind of trick branches out, and there's a lot of different factors involved there that, that they may come to that conclusion for a reason. So, if you would, just get with me after.
And did y'all go to the five inch numbers now, instead of the four inch?
That's another example, that it's always been code, and that's some of the problem we're having, is we didn't change the code or come up with another one, it just hasn't been maybe as enforced as it should have been. But now that, that never changed, it was just never enforced, it's the same as code as we've always had.
So, the numbers have to be five inches?
Five inches.
For any business?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. The other thing I have is, right there behind my shop, on the corner of Jordan and Stewart, we were talking about skateboarders going out.
Yes.
That is their prime location for skateboarders. They're already there. My landlord owns that land.
Okay.
And as part of Cure, I want to see if we can reset that land, maybe fix it up for the skateboarders with help from the communities, 'cause they need a place. I mean, they're gonna need trash up everywhere they go, and if they have their own place, they'll keep it nice and neat, hopefully, but that's one of the things.
And right now, that's the area we deal with, right? Don't have a place to go?
Don't have a place to go, but they're already there, so, anyway, that's what I wanted to say.
That's in Jordan Stewart? You're in Jordan?
Yeah, Jordan Stewart, right there behind the city lots.
Okay.
And, uh, the next Cure meeting is Thursday at seventeen, at the Hamptons.
Hi, I'm Clay Woods, I live, uh, in Edge of Downtown, I want to commend you on a number of things that have happened downtown the last several years, where the, the council is, uh, taken a great deal of interest in downtown, there's a lot to be seen, a lot of positive things going on. We do have some issues where, um, we, we're kind of at a tipping point with a lot of new businesses coming in, we've got, um, some issues with sound ordinances, I'd like to make sure that the city is addressing that in a positive way to, to encourage those businesses to stay downtown. I'm encouraging you to do a, I believe the state limit is about eighty-five decibels.
Correct.
I think that that would be an ideal point, right now, I believe the police officers are having a problem because they can be cited just by anybody, for anyone, no matter what the decimal is.
Right. It's based on the true personal rule.
Correct, exactly. And so, I think this is something that needs to be addressed and make it so we've got a, a even playing field, something so they can actually put out a meter and determine whether this is a problem or not a problem. Uh, I'd like to see downtown continuing this positive direction. Music is going to be a big element of preserving downtown, I believe. And so, this is something we want to encourage, not discourage. And I think the community would be willing to establish a level that is both comfortable for the business owner and for the community art. One thing that I'd like to see going on as well, we've got an occasion where there's several properties downtown. Because so much is happening downtown, they've been buying up properties very inexpensively. You can decide that, well, they don't need to do anything, they're just gonna sit on that until the, the, uh, the whole tide rises and they're gonna bring up the value of their property. And they put very high values that isn't justified, but they've gotten so little in it that there's no reason to not do that. Uh, and I think one way that the city could possibly address that issue would be to say, okay, if you've decided this property is worth $100,000, we're gonna tax you $100,000 as opposed to the $4,000 or $5,000 or $10,000 that they're being taxed on, which would discourage that kind of speculation that makes, since these properties are set out, and then discourage the development of downtown. So, I'd like us to kind of think of some ways to continue the momentum to see downtown through the way it is. I think that downtown is what so much of the community identifies themselves with. They want to see a fire downtown and a store downtown as a great asset, the fact that police departments, they are so much as gone on downtown. I'd like to encourage you to continue in that vein and congratulate you on all of that.
Thank you. You know, there's just been a tremendous amount. There's been literally millions of dollars put into downtown and that's an investment we need to protect. And the only way we can protect that is to continue improving downtown. Dan Tinkin?
My name's Dan Tinkin. Uh, I really appreciate your work. You've done a great job. Thanks you've been here. I appreciate all the department heads, they always do great work. And all the guys in the back row there that get in the ditches and fix the roads, you know, we really underloved them, the people, uh, work hard every day and kind of man on the streets, the faces of the city. They do a great job. I have a few questions, uh, first one's on the master plan. I know we had one and I think it's about the expire or when we update that.
You asked a question about impact fees and John, would you cover, I believe you're referring to the plan on impact fees.
Well, first thing is you have to have updated master plans, recommended about every five years to get it done. That's the whole...
Compromise.
Everything. The last impact fees is extremely important. I mean, all these people that live in these, these subdivisions, if we waive all their impact fees on them, uh, you know, that, I can understand, you'd be on either side of that. I was on the side that said, don't waive the impact fees and scream each other back in, but now we have to resolve it. Now that we waived them all, if you applied at the time, and then we, we did it by implement, so it was just an open invitation for developers to come in where they have to pay any other place and not pay their fair share. And they took, just as anyone else, with great advantage of that.
Sure did.
And it really hurt the city.
Yeah.
And now we're suffering from that. And, uh, anyway, but my other thing is I don't want to lose all the impact fees. And I know if you don't update the master plan within a certain period of time, that's gonna be waived.
That's right. John, would you address that?
Yes, in regard to our master plan, the city comprehensive plan, uh, that was done in 2004. And it's only, you know, generally recommended that you do kind of short term, every one to three years, kind of do annual review, sort of internal review, and how we're doing our original plan. And it also recommends, depending on changing, you know, conditions within the city, how fast the city is growing, what level of development and activity you have, they give a full update to the city comprehensive plan every, you know, five to 10 years, depending on each particular city. Uh, now, if, if, and part of that, as you know, is the master plan, the future land use plan, and, uh, the impact fees, or as required by state law, it takes all of that into effect, what our future land use, uh, land uses are going to be and what kind of travel, uh, traffic demand that they place on infrastructure. What is our master server, and what roads do we need to build and improve in order to accommodate future growth for those future land, those future land uses? The impact fee that's currently, that we currently have adopted was adopted in, by ordinance in November of 2004. So, we've got until, and, and, and you're right, the state statute says that we need to review that every five years and update that every five years. Um, and so, that is a process that we're already beginning to look at. We've already talked to consultants to help us go through that process. It has to be an engineering, there has to be some engineering that goes into that, into the calculations of what those impact fees need to be.
So, it hasn't been done yet?
Has not been done yet.
When is it gonna be done? This is my question.
Uh, well, we, we hope to start that very soon. Our consultants that we've talked to have told us that as long as, as long as we have that engineering study underway, at the time when we hit, you know, around that November time period, that we're okay to continue on with the impact fees that we have until we get our new, uh, impact fee to play. So, so we'll be starting that between now and November, something closer to, you know, $70 a week.
We can't, we cannot go and lose, lose that impact. I mean, impact, as you know, impact may better, but impact fees are very difficult to get it, get it particularly in small, in such communities that maybe not all other communities around you have the impact. In my experience, then, you can get it on books, don't you?
Yeah, and that's basically just for everybody else, it's for the developer, develops a lot, he pays a portion of that that'll go into freight, pay for sewer and road infrastructure to maintain, what it's gonna use up. Uh, my other question was on code enforcement. I think it's been great. You called Steve Methan and he gets it done, you know, very quickly as far as I'm concerned. I've called him twice for grass and he's had it done yesterday. Uh, one of my concerns is a while back, uh, we were also talking about grass and rental property and deteriorating rental property. And, uh, a while back, when I, when I was on, unsuccessfully tried to get, uh, an ordinance passed in which you would give, like, if you have rental property, you pay like 25 bucks a year. The 25 bucks goes to fund more code enforcement people. Uh, if, if we could pass that, and then you're expected just once a year, if we pass that, it could lower the ad valorem tax rate because you're gonna improve the property that's around you in the lower economic places, you're gonna have a better place. The master plan we did last time shows that our biggest problem is old housing stocks that was not maintained. We hadn't maintained it, hadn't maintained it, hadn't maintained it, and it's just making a terrible slide. Uh, it would obviously focus on quality of office uses, it would obviously improve the presence of the community. Obviously, it helps for public safety in terms of dilapidated buildings that burned down. Uh, it would achieve significant progress on city infrastructure and it would promote economic growth, because if I own my property here and there's a rental property over there and the rental people are supposed to maintain that property, then it's gonna be better for me to buy my property. So, I hope and pray and wish that the city council will take that up. Uh, I think it's crucial, and the longer we wait, the worse it's gonna get.
Agreed.
Other comments on Grand Park, man, I hope we get that done, get that half million dollar, Grand Park is such a jewel. I'm a big postcard collector. You have just magnificent sites of Grand Park, just in all its greatness. If you go there today, it's overused. I mean, there's no, no park, I would bet even the sports park is used as much, 'cause the grass, John Cobb always said, you can tell how well it's used by how much trash there is. And he'd send trash, you know, trucks out there three or four times a week to pick up trash. So, I really pray that we get that done, it's gonna be a great deal for us. Uh, the other thing I really hope the city looks at is broadcasting city council meetings. Uh, you know, when, when I was on, the newspaper covered it a lot more when I was on, they would say what was happening, they would put the agenda, the date of, they would report on it the day after, they would say who voted how. But even with that, uh, and obviously, a couple way back on that, and I understand manpower, but the city certainly, you know, talk about costs and they argue about costs when I was on there, you could at least videotape it, just videotape the damn thing, you know, stick it, you know, it doesn't have to be live. Hopefully, it could be, but it wouldn't be possible. Video, make a story, just where you can hear people and see faces. And people can look at it at home and say, oh, that's what happened. You know, I was never afraid of somebody telling me what I did or anything that I did. Usually, they said something that didn't happen. And if you had it on tape, it's just that much better feeling, you know? And if you really want people involved, you know, you can broadcast it on a radio station, you can, uh, like I said, record it, tape it stations, and just, it doesn't cost that much. Um, a question that also, how many, how many African Americans, what's the general population of African Americans in Greenville, approximately? I always thought about 20 and 20 Hispanics.
21%.
21%. And probably at least that much for Hispanics. But if you look at the city, you don't see that reflected. And I love these, all, all y'all are great, I'm working with y'all, we're all wonderful people. But you don't see that reflected either in our employee force, nor do you see it in any of the, of the, of the leadership, I guess, with the exception of Sue. But, uh, you, you can't, you know, one of my favorite sayings, no one of us is smarter than all of us. And if you want to avoid situations, I believe Harold does a great job as a police chief, uh, really wonderful. I know there's a lot of great policemen. But if there's a perception, and there's obviously, it's great historical, you just can't deny, and you can't deny, when I used to do defense work, you can't deny that, I'm not talking about city Greenville, but in many places, people were stopped driving while life, and that, that's a fact. I, I've run it, I've seen that. You know, I, I was, but anyway, you get perception like that. And if you don't have any employees, whether it's true or whether it's not, and if you don't have any employees that are, you have a diverse population, if you don't have people at the top that people can go to and say, you know, if I walk into a courtroom, I'm gonna see the judge, he's gonna be white like me, you know, if I go to, uh, to any of y'all, I mean, obviously, I have lots of cultural bonds and things, if I go, uh, anywhere I go, that happens for me. And I think that, that you can find good quality people, I'm not saying the mission quality whatsoever, but, uh, when I was on the council, it's my fault, you know, as much as anybody, I certainly did do great things to help him. And I don't know, but we need to work on that. Uh, so anyway, those are just my comments. Thank you very much. Y'all do a great job. Thank you. I wanted to say, if you don't have your kids, someplace you go, Kelly Goddard at the YMCA has a great program, and a great program at the Greenville Rec Center. We have a great bowling alley, there's a sports park, it's open all down, there's a roller rink in there and hockey, all kinds of stuff.
Very good.
My name is Carol Rose Hart, and I just want to give a big thumbs up to the city for the Independence Day celebration at the sports park. I was very happy. We came back from out of state to attend because they felt an obligation to it, but I am so glad that we did. We missed fireworks in Greenville for the last few years when it was discontinued, and I pushed Doug to push the council to do it, and I was so glad it worked. We went, we did as was recommended, we came earlier, we weren't there the entire time, we came about seven, 7:15, but before the big crowd for the fireworks. And we stayed late, so we missed the traffic. We got a great parking spot. Uh, the sports park was in immaculate condition. We did not get a single mosquito bite to the entire night. And that's a and something for July in Texas. Did get a couple ant bites, but not too much, you know? Uh, it, it was great. There were several food vendors, like the band, they were good quality. There was lots of space on the ground for more people to actually come into the park. The people who parked on the other parking lots at Lowe's and the other places and just watched the fireworks missed at least half of the, the stuff for the evening. It was a great family focused, family oriented evening. Uh, there were people pulling their kids in wagons and strollers, kids rolling down the berm, people brought their dogs. It was, it was what you want to see for a family event for this city. And, um, definitely promoted our value of promoting family values. Uh, fireworks program, whoever had to do those, was good, was a very good fireworks show. And, um, let's see, I, I just, my, my only thing, my only plug here now, is we had attended a concert in the park in Frisco two years ago, one summer for our anniversary, a free concert, great, kind of the same thing, family environment, people just around, kids running around while there's concerts, free concerts going on. It was great. Uh, we went to one of the free outdoor concerts in Rockwall last month, and it was very crowded. We didn't know it was such a big deal, but it was not the same atmosphere there, uh, because almost everyone that you saw there was carrying around their beer bottle and had their coolers. And I know it's been discussed to allow alcohol in the city parks on special events. And I went to strongly encourage the city council and the government and the promoters and the people trying to bring in the, the sports events and things like that. Don't give up our family values. We want to have family values, we want to be a safe place, and you can have a great time without the alcohol. The atmosphere in Rockwall was not a family atmosphere. In Frisco it was, and we, if you didn't make a note of it at the time, but we don't recall seeing any alcohol there. There was no alcohol, it was very childlike, it was great. You can have a good time without it. Keep our parks safe for our families.
Very good. Thank you. Those were great comments. I just wanted to, I think everybody knows, but just to give them some more credit, you know, we had a fire department, police department, parks department, uh, very much involved in planning that event, and they just, they just did a tremendous job. And I know I may have left some other staffers out, but, uh, they were very focused on making this a very family oriented event, a very safe event, a very well planned event, and I have to agree, my family had a great time, and we're very proud of the former community here.
Got two questions. With the expansion of 380 nearing completion or on the horizon, what is the city doing to look at the traffic increase that's gonna go down through 69, past the hospital, with all the trucks that'll be coming down and trying to take advantage of bypassing 30? The second question is with the road construction, uh, do we have to plan on a fronting road switching to one way or can they remain as two, two lanes, two ways?
Okay. Good questions. And I may need the suit to help a little bit on, on some of the answers, but the, uh, the three, how do we create, one of the concerns that's been brought up is that, once that runway is widened all the way into our community, that it's gonna increase truck traffic in and through our community on 69. And our mayor and city council members have been very focused on trying to determine a solution, uh, to easing that potential traffic congestion, because we don't believe it's been well thought of, or well thought out, uh, to, as to how to, how to correct that plan for that. One of the things that we've been discussing with this proper transportation, we, we've also included it in, uh, a request for stimulus funding, uh, to, to extend F-1570 on the, uh, 66 to Highway 38. So, that truck traffic could, could turn down 1570, go all the way to I-30 and bypass going through the center, center of town. I'm assuming, can't, can't let you correct me on this. Uh, as far as the, and as far as progress on that, we have made a whole lot of progress on that because, one, we don't have the right way to build that road. Tech stock's aware, it's a priority for us to try to do something, because we know by 2011, you know, that, that project will be finished and opened up. Funding is an issue. It's a very expensive project to, to extend that all through. Uh, so, so it's, it's not gonna battle on them, it's gonna be a challenge, but we do have, we do have a solution plan that we feel like will work, uh, to mitigate that issue. The other issue with road construction and the access roads along I-30, can we leave those two way or do we have to go to one way? According to Tech stock's plan, according to their, um, structure project, it is, it is gonna be a one-way access road. And I don't, I don't think we can change that. I don't think we have the ability to change it. Sue, could you elaborate on that?
You are correct, uh, as part of the agreement to do this project, this project actually started at $6 million about 10 years ago, and the city worked with Tech stock, the previous administration and previous city council to bring this project from $6 million to $40 million. And one of the, uh, agreement was to make the front road from Montier Stratum to Division one way eastbound and one way westbound. And as, uh, also to, uh, to inform, uh, the citizen is, uh, there is gonna be a turnaround at several locations, for example, at 34 in front of Walmart, there is gonna be a turnaround on inside, there is gonna be a turnaround on, uh, six, uh, on, uh, 69, uh, that if you are in the front road, you can basically not turn around and bypass the intersection if you want to come back to the other side. So, it's gonna be much easier than, uh, just, uh, once it's one way... So it's gonna be much easier than just, once it's one-way and you have to turn it around, it's gonna be a very easy circulation and mobility, but it is gonna be one-way completely from Monte Strato to Division.
Yes, I was wondering if the new bridge over the interstate on Westick Street is gonna have the room for sidewalks? I've heard that it's not, and that just doesn't make sense to me. And I've read the papers up to date that there was some kid or teenager that was injured just crossing the service road there on, I believe, the north side of the interstate, did I say the westbound service road? So I think it would be kind of careless for the city or the Teck Stop, not that loud in the running for sidewalks to go across that interstate.
You have the first person to bring that question up, that was the issue brought up actually during a, a public meeting with Ex-Formal Transportation that we had in this room, Craig Mizer, our area engineer, presented the project, answered questions about it. At that time, he indicated Teck Stop didn't look at that, and they decided not to do that, they said they had the funds to do it. You know, admittedly, we're not, it's a forty million dollar project, and we, we were concerned we weren't getting that done.
You are very good, man.
Oh, wait, that's good, no, not sidewalks, sorry, sidewalks were not included, Teck Stop opted not to, well, I say opted not to do it, they've indicated they don't like it. They didn't have the funding to add that to the project. And you're not the only one brought that up, clearly, it's been brought up a couple of times in the last year, unfortunately, that project's been working for, for a year. It feels like that, and it didn't get, it either didn't get included, or they, as I recall, with Craig, with Craig Mizer said was that they looked at that and could not justify it. Am I, what do you, so that's what, that'll be?
No need to say.
I'm not finished, sir, I just remembered.
I just wanna, I just wanna add one point, and we need to really, Steve Alexander, mayor and I, attended the ceremony for awarding the contracts by Teck Stop. Our project was six and a half million dollars short in funding. And two projects before us was one million dollars short, and the project was dropped. But our, I should give credit to our mayor and city council, and our senator, and also our state representative, that worked behind the scenes and made this project where it is right now. So, you know, I think, actually, I was nervous when two projects before us was dropped for one million, being one million dollars short, and the Teck Stop Commission basically instructed the staff to go back and cut the project, go back to the drawing board, so-called. So again, we had a lot of challenges in ten years, starting this project, and then we run into a lot of challenges funding, so that's a good example. When Teck Stop mentioned that, you know, funding was short, it shows you how difficult it was to get this project.
In so many cases, not only are we having to demolish these homes, but these are homes that have a potential in the future because they have historic value. As our community grows and we turn things around, these little crackwood-style homes and late Victorian-era homes that we're tearing down, you can find the very same example in Rockwall, it's valued two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. So if we could find a way to get a little more ahead of the curve, what's happening mostly today is you have a property that's valued at, say, forty thousand dollars, and it deteriorates to the point that it requires thirty thousand dollars repairs, and they tell them you've got sixty days to implement these thirty thousand dollars in repairs or we're gonna tear it down. Well, obviously, what happens is we tear it down. If we can get to the point to get ahead of the curve and find these properties where they only need a couple of thousand, four thousand dollars worth of repairs, and they'll be repaired, and they'll be saved for the future, hopefully one day fixed up, painted up, be an asset. Good comment, you know, of course you know that. As you know, and even though we have a Substandard Structures Board, that Substandard Structures Board, in my estimation, works very hard at trying to reclaim what they feel like they can reclaim, and they just have a real challenge in front of them of trying to make those very hard decisions as to whether to tear, give the demolition order or not. And John, I know you're sure sad to deal with Substandard Structures Board, we're gonna meet with them, you may have some comments there.
Phil, I agree with everything you just said. I would love to get to the point where we're doing minor repairs and getting this house in fact, back into shape. You know, that kind of architecture and history, you can't, you can't replace that. And so, you know, I'd like to, I could tell you that the Substandard Structures Board would much rather have those homes repaired and put back into good use in the future. I honestly believe that, that they're not allowed to tear down structures.
Hi. I'm Marilyn Thomas, I've lived here about fifty years, and I have been concerned over this COBISA project because I was wondering if there was a contingency plan, since they use so much water during drought conditions when we're under restrictions, what, how this will impact us. And also, I just wanna say, I wish you hadn't said to go get on the interstate, the new entrance now from Priscilla Lane, I live on Priscilla Lane.
Okay.
And it's a city circle, and we had, it looked like the interstate for about two weeks after that, it was, you know, I thought, oh my gosh, why did they save this? But anyway, it's most of this.
That's a very, that's a very good question, about COBISA and the water usage and what happens during, during drought conditions, and I'm gonna let Sue here just a second to talk about that, because I think you need to elaborate on what I'm gonna say. We have, I'm gonna get this wrong, we have about twenty-three million gallons a day in water reserve. We use about four million gallons a day now. They're gonna use at peak times, anticipate in twenty-fourteen million gallons a day and sixteen million gallons a day at this point. Originally, it was gonna be sixteen million gallons a day, they backed off that number a little bit to latest fourteen million gallons a day now. One of the things that we have talked about included in the contract is that we're able to, with our rehabilitated, expanded wastewater supply, provide a fluid, and we will build the infrastructure, provide the fluid to use as opposed to potable or raw, that is, not potable or raw. That will free up capacity in our, in our, no matter what we have available, as well as capacity in both our lines. But we'll still have all the capacity in the old line, but we'll gain capacity in the new line. And so, we don't anticipate that being a huge problem if we, in fact, might be a good problem to have to figure out and deal with, you know, if we can, because of the amount of good things that could come from a standpoint of financial aspect, and for maybe more services, lower tax rate. As far as an industrial customer, that's a difficult issue to say, you know, if we're under, if we're under a water drought contingency and we have to tell everybody to conserve, there's gonna be an industry, they're providing power, they're gonna need the continued water. And that's an issue we anticipate to have to deal with, and how to best balance, you know, the implementation of our conservation policies. I think that'll be a difficult thing, because I think citizens will look at that and say, hey, if they can be using water, why can't I use it? You know, and that'll be a difficult, difficult topic to deal with, but I think it's one we'll be able to deal with, particularly if we have the, you know, I can't remember the exact numbers, but we were talking over a ten-year period, roughly sixty million dollars coming into the city.
Consciousness.
Absolutely, and it's something to be cautious about. Very good question. Was that, is that anything on? Too many things.